And I'm gonna go ahead and get started because I realized some of y'all are getting your goodies. So you can still hear though, right? So I'm gonna go ahead and get started. I don't want to get behind. I do want to try to end on time this evening. So let's see how it goes. I am so happy to be here and see your wonderful faces. I am Councilwoman Deion Falk, city of Inglewood. We are doing amazing things. When I say that, it's just like, wow, we're doing it, right? So happy to be here. We have lots of great information to share with you all. But before we do, we have some of my colleagues in the house, and they wanted to come out and bring greetings and just say hello to you. So I am going to bring them up. I am going to start with our top man. Mayor James T. Butts is in the house. I'm gonna bring him up first. Come on, Mayor. Come on, Mayor.
Hey, you guys, let's hear it for Deion Falk. Now, I was trying to figure it out, why it's always so crowded in here? And then I looked back there. She has all these sugar and cookies back there. And people will always come out for the sugar. But you guys, this is such a great time in Inglewood because you know what? I can tell that everybody has more pride in being an Inglewood resident. So you give yourselves a hand because of this community spirit. Now, I want you to think about it. We're not just a city anymore. We're an international city. We're gonna have the FIFA World Cup here in '26. Eight matches. We're gonna have the NBA All-Star Weekend here in '26. We're gonna have Super Bowl 61 here in '27. Now, get this now. That'll be two Super Bowls in five years. Two Super Bowls in five years. Never in the country has that ever happened, but in Inglewood, California. And then in 2028, we have the opening and closing ceremonies for the Olympics and basketball and swimming here in the city of champions. And we were the Super Bowl champions in Super Bowl 56 back in '22. So this is not the Inglewood that used to be. It's the Inglewood of tomorrow. And I probably told you this last time, but here's how you know things have changed. Here's how you know things have changed. When they sell a property in Ladera, Windsor Hills, U Park, or Westchester, when they sell them on the flyer, the last thing you see is "Inglewood adjacent." Okay? It's a selling point to be near Inglewood. So you guys, we've all arrived. We had our unemployment rate drop from seventeen and a half percent to 5% or less. We went from the highest unemployment rate in the state of California. And we got some union guys back here to tell you the truth. We have a lot of jobs here to 5% or less. The lowest unemployment rate for a minority-majority city in the United States of America. So we are proud to serve you. I've been in this business for 53 years. Fifty-three years. Last 15 years, I've been the mayor of Inglewood. Longest-serving mayor in the history of the city. And you know what? I always, when I would go to another place, when I left here, go to Santa Monica, I said, "It doesn't get any better than this." When I went to the airport, ran counterterrorism, had a budget bigger than the city, I said, "It doesn't get any better than this." When I came back in 2011, February 1st, and we were gonna be bankrupt by June of 2011, and the Lakers and the Kings had left, Airport Park Hotel had been bulldozed, the track went from 43,000 people a day down to 1,000 people a day. And the only thing that was left was a Sizzler and a Big Donut. And I said, "Man, it don't get any worse than this." But look at us now, you guys. International city of Inglewood. We're going to spend $60 million to renovate the main library, to make the third floor an innovation center, to have a videography area, to have AI instruction, 3D computer modeling. And we're gonna try and connect it across Manchester to Inglewood High. They're gonna spend $200 million to renovate Inglewood High. And so we are proud of being the city of champions, but we want to be known as the city of knowledge. And so we continue forward. Thank you, guys, for all your support. I appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, let's give it up for Mayor James T. Butts. Okay, so now we have our other councilwoman that is here, Ms. Gloria Gray that's in the house. Let me see. Who knows? Really quickly, put your hands up, put your finger up for which district she represents. Let's see. Oh, come on. Number one. She represents number one. Very good. All right, so let's give it up. Councilwoman Gloria Gray. She represents District 1. Yes, all right. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Falk. You know, she and I are the councilwomen on your city council. So let's give it up for the councilwomen, right? All right. I want to, first of all, thank you all for being here, but I want to thank your councilwoman, Deion Falk, which represents District 4, for bringing all of us together because, you know, this is really important to have these town hall meetings. And I know that she's had them consistently, and I applaud her for that because it really is an opportunity for all of you to learn about, you know, what's going on, to be informed, to be engaged, and really to learn about what's going on in this city. You heard the mayor talk about all the great things that are happening in Inglewood, and they are great things. We are in an international city, right? That is big. I've been here for many years, and I don't think I've ever heard that before. So, I mean, it gives me chills because Inglewood is really on the move. It is progressive. It is everything that anyone should want to have when you live in a city like this. And so I'm proud to be here. But Deion, Councilwoman Falk, thank you for consistently informing your constituents of what's going on because there's a lot going on. I look at the city manager. I look at the city clerk. She had a fantastic event yesterday to make sure that people knew how important it is to vote. I mean, it was fantastic. So thank you, city clerk. I have the city treasurer over there. We're all committed to making sure, the city manager, all of us staff back there, to making sure that this is the best city in the world. So thank you, Deion. Thank you for having me. Enjoy the meeting. Thank you very much.
All right, let's give it up. Gloria Gray, District 1. All right. And so my other two colleagues, compadres, unfortunately could not be here. One of them, Alex Padilla, Councilman Alex Padilla, lost one of his really good friends. He announced it at council meeting. And so he is having to go to the rosary tonight. So please keep him in his prayers. He's very upset about that. And so I'm just gonna continue to keep him in my prayers as well. So they could not be here this evening. But my girl is here, city clerk Ayesha Thompson, and my other girl, city treasurer. So I'm gonna bring up the city clerk, Ayesha Thompson. And I know our councilwoman Gloria Gray did kind of touch on it. She had a fabulous event. And so she has a very important job, and that is to notify and remind you all about how important it is to vote, right? We have a very important election coming up. And I think she did an amazing job notifying everyone of the special election and then making it fun in the process, right? Like, I had a great time. And so I just, hands down, you're amazing. Love you so much. She is rocking this position. Come on up, city clerk, Ayesha Thompson.
Again, the hellos have been mentioned, but let me just reiterate my hellos and how it is, how awesome it is to see everyone out tonight. Councilwoman Falk does a fantastic job with making sure that her residents are notified. They are informed of what is happening. And so kudos to you also, councilwoman, for doing a fantastic job here in District 4. You rock this seat, so you go, girl. Okay, now, I'm tired. I'm tired. I'm tired. But it's all right. I had a fantastic event. I'm so thankful to our mayor and to our councilpeople, our city treasurer, our city managers, all those that helped to make sure that last night's event was a success. We named it Votella. I don't know if you saw the advertisement. That's why I got the crazy hair because I was kind of being in theme with what we were doing last night. But Votella went forth, and I'm so excited because we had our very own Dean Logan at this event last night. And how awesome was that for him to be there? Because it's not every day or all the time that we get the head clerk out in a city to speak to our residents. And so I'm so thankful that he has partnered with the city of Inglewood. He's a good friend of mine. And so he came, and he was there the entire event last night to make sure that our residents, if they had any questions, he was there to answer them. And so again, Proposition 50 is coming up, ladies and gentlemen, November the 4th. There's a special election that's happening. That's less than 45 days from today. My office will begin, as of tomorrow, starting to put up information about Proposition 50. If you have any questions that you need answered about Proposition 50. Again, I have to stay neutral, so don't ask me what you think about it. I'm just gonna tell you, I can give you some information. But again, my office will be available if you have any questions regarding our upcoming election. And then if you have any questions on polling places and all that good stuff, I will be more than happy to answer those. So again, thank you, councilwoman, for allowing me to speak to your residents. And if you have any questions, my cards are in the back, and we have voter registration cards on the table back there as well. Thank you, everyone.
So proud of her. Let's give it up, our city clerk, Ayesha Thompson. So now I'm going to introduce our newest newbie on the dais, our city treasurer, Angela Allen. And she is rolling up her sleeves and digging in. We are so excited to have her active and engaged on the council. So welcome, 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 Angela Allen.
Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see everyone. This is what community togetherness and community engagement look like. So give yourselves a hand for just taking the time out. Taking the time out to be here. Councilwoman, you always show up and show out when it comes to your town hall. So kudos to you, too. I applaud you because this is nice. So I just want to just give my regards to you guys. I just thank God that I walked into a seat or I was elected into a seat in a city that's fiscally responsible. So thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Enough said, right? Let's give it up for her. So now I want to bring up our city manager, Louis Atwell. And he started off as our Public Works Director. And, you know, him and I, we would go round and round. And so he probably was like, "Oh, my God, this councilwoman coming on to this council. What am I gonna do with her?" But over time, he got, he just got used to how I operate and became used to how demanding I am, I guess. And we just have such a great relationship now. I so much appreciate him and all he does for this city. He works very hard for all of the districts, for the mayor's office as well. And so please, give it up for our hard-working city manager, Louis Atwell.
Councilwoman, thank you so much. And thank you so much to everybody that is here. It just shows how involved this community is. And it's so important to stay involved with everything that's going on in the world right now. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to my staff that's here. Some of them didn't have to come. Some are not presenting, but they are here. If you're city staff, please stand up. I know, yup. I know, I saw Crystal McLaughlin. She's out front. We have the library director, Karia Royal, who's here. We have Tony Almost, the Public Works Director, who's going to be presenting. We have Lieutenant Freeman Smith, who is from the Police Department. We also have Jerry Tucker. I think he's sitting down somewhere. There he is. Even though I asked him to stand up, see, he doesn't listen to me. He's code enforcement. And then we have, who else is here? I think I saw Mandeer Singh as well. Oh, and Bernard McCrumby, of course. He'll also be presenting. He's from Community Development. But no, I really thank my staff for coming. We want to support the councilwoman. We want to support the mayor. They are the greatest people that I've ever worked for. I've been in service now for 35 years. Thank you. I don't look it. I do dye my beard. I do. And I was Public Works Director for 12 years before becoming the city manager. So if I make it past these three months, it'll be one year as city manager. So thank you very much, everyone. Take care.
All right, y'all. He's gonna make it, okay? Let's give it up for our city manager. And then is our Assistant City Manager, Jose Cortez. Did he make it? He didn't make it, okay. And I don't, okay. Just want to make sure I don't leave anybody out. So if they are here, they will come to me. Now, you guys have seen our elected leaders, but then also we have our District 4 leadership that I work with all the time, day to day, that helped me run District 4. So with that said, I would love for them to stand up and be recognized. District 4 commissioners, board members. We are gonna take the microphone around really quickly and just say your name and your commission, please.
Oh, no, not me first. Welcome, everyone. My name is Dolly Morrison, and I am the Commissioner of... Forgot just now. Oh, yeah, city and streets and parks. I forgot just that fast.
Hi, I'm Cheryl McClellan. I'm the Housing Commissioner. Next year, I'll be there for 10 years as a Housing Commissioner.
All right.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Cochran. I'm the Library Commissioner. And woo-hoo for the development of our new library.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rita Burnett. I'm on the Aviation Commission, Inglewood Aviation Commission.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cheryl Shaw Williams, and I'm on the Planning Commission.
I'm Lois Hill, and I'm Parking and Traffic.
Good evening. Christopher Beck, Parks and Recreation Commission.
You all good? Okay. Does that cover everybody? All righty. So really quickly, we're getting ready to get started. But before we do, I wanted to just take a quick minute to just kind of acknowledge some of the great events that we've had so far in District 4. But before I do, too, I do want to acknowledge our carpenters are in the house. So a little bit about them. So not only are they all just beautiful and handsome members of the labor union, but then also, they are very hardworking. They are representative of the different construction projects that we have. And we have a lot of them in the city of Inglewood. And so they're very supportive and always offer support, help. So I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge you all. Thank you all for always coming out, participating in our construction sites, and being available and just working with our city leadership. So thank you very much. Really quickly, before we get started, I also want to take a minute to just talk about some of the great events that we have done for 2025. So in April, we had our first town hall. So this is actually the second one. So we are doing the two town halls a year. So this is our second one. And this will be great information. I like to do one in spring and then one towards the fall. And then also, in May, I partnered with our city clerk, Ayesha Thompson, and we did Women Rock. How many ladies out there attended Women Rock? So a little secret for y'all. Next year in May will be our five-year anniversary. And when I tell you it's going down, it's going down. So y'all be ready. Women Rock next year, we're going, is going down. Now, also, July 5th, we had the City of Inglewood Music Festival. Who attended the music festival? Uh-oh, not as many claps. Okay, so next year, we gotta make sure that all of you guys attended. It is a free concert in the park. We have great music, and it's a family event. You will love it. So let's make sure everyone comes out and participates next year, okay? I want to see all of you guys there. We had our backpack event in August. Did we bring the kids out for the backpack event this August? We gave away laptops. And so that was a great event. We had a lot of kids in Inglewood that received a Dell laptop for free, okay? So that was an amazing event. I partnered with our Assembly Member, Tina McKinner. And I do believe her office is in the house. Can we stand up? Can we have her office staff stand up and be... Can we have her say, just acknowledge her? Take the microphone over there. Really quickly.
Hello. I'm so happy to be here. I'm representing Tina, Assembly Member, Tina McKinner. And unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight, but she does send her regrets. And I look forward to seeing all of you guys at our town hall, which I will send you all an email somehow, okay? Thank you so much. Thank you. So in the month of December, we have lots of toy giveaways. So a lot of you always contact my office, and you ask, "How can you get involved? How can you give to families that are in need during the month of December?" So please reach out to my office. There's always ways you can help. You can volunteer your time. You can volunteer maybe some Starbucks coffee money if you have $5, if you have $10, and you want to donate it. We will take that money, and we will go compile all of the money that we get, and we will buy bulk toys, and we will give those toys to kids in need. So however you want to help, just let me know. Just contact my office. But there's always a way for you to do so, okay? And then we will have our Winter Wonderland this year. It will be December 7th. And we service over, generally, it's around 2,000 students for the city of Inglewood. So please come out. If you want to volunteer, let me know. I would love to have you guys come out and get active with that. So that is a lot of what we've done and what we're gonna have coming up. At the end of this month, I am looking at having a historically black college and university event for the last weekend of this month. And so a lot of our students are able to go to these colleges and universities because they are more affordable, a lot of times, than some of the other universities. And so they accept them with open arms, and they are historically black college universities, also known as HBCUs. So we're gonna do this event at the Creative House in downtown Inglewood. I would love for you guys to come out, participate Saturday and Sunday. And we just want you to wear your college gear, whether you went to a HBCU or any college you went to. Just wear your college gear. Come out, talk to our students. Let's try and encourage our students to go to college. Let's try and keep them in school. We all know that it's really hard out there if you don't have a BA degree. So anything that we can do, that I can do to help encourage them, I'm wanting to do that. So if there'll be more information, connect with my social media. But that event will take place at the end of the month. And I just want you guys to come out, have a good time. It's a free event. We'll have refreshments. It'll be a good time, and a time to fellowship and to encourage our students, our Inglewood Unified School District students, okay? So that is that. And I talked about the Darby Dixon event and also the Winter Wonderland. So with that said, next up, I am bringing up our District 4 officer. Here he comes. We have Lieutenant Freeman Smith in the house. And he's going to talk a little bit about what the public safety stats are right now in District 4. I know, coming out of COVID, everybody was reporting that there is speeding everywhere. Councilwomen, they were speeding. They ran the light. They were speeding. And it was reported that it was happening nationwide. So hopefully, that is a little bit better, right, Lieutenant Freeman? I hope so. So he's going to talk a little bit about what's happening in District 4. Let's welcome him. Come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lieutenant Freeman Smith. I work for the Inglewood Police Department. As you guys all know, I am the Night Watch Commander. I work Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. My work hours is from 3:00 PM to 1:00 AM. So I thank councilwoman. I've been working with her since I made the rank of lieutenant and trying to resolve any concerns that come to her office that comes to us. And we try to address them in a quickly, timely manner. So we'll go through a couple of slides real quick. So this right here is a map where we pull for the crime stats. The same, this information is also available to you at mapandcrime, oh, it's a crimeapp, I'm sorry, dot com. So I tried to minimize a little bit. So one side is showing her district. The other side is showing circles of where we pull stats. And the stats we pulled was for arson, assault, burglary, homicide, larceny, motor vehicle theft, rape, and robbery. And for the stats comparison from the year 2024 to 2025, as of today, we're down 16% in overall crime in this district, which is great. So we thank you guys for being informative, of calling us out when you see something. I'm gonna give you guys some numbers at the end of the slide to report stuff. And like I said, the cooperation by the community is what does it all. And we get our officer out there as quick as possible to address it. And I'm, as a person who grew up Inglewood, like the mayor said earlier about the old Inglewood, this is the Inglewood of tomorrow. So all this stuff that used to happen, I can tell you, this is a good day to be a resident in this great city. So she asked a question about traffic. I'm also the traffic lieutenant overseeing traffic. And our whole thing is to minimize traffic accidents as well as addressing speeders, residential problems, which is stop signs mostly, and anything that occurs within the street. So we have been doing a great job. We've been having unfortunate, a lot of DUI arrests. People go to these events, and they come out and sometimes drink a little too much. So we have increased in those numbers right there. But overall, accidents are down. Like I said, but if you have, able to get this barcode, I'm gonna give you some numbers as well. You can call me or get on this barcode and report anything that's traffic-related within your community, and we will address it and try to resolve the problem. So these are the type of reports you can file online if you go to citininglewood.org. There's a tab in there for police. Or you just click on the police link and hit File a Report. And these are reports that you don't have to wait. You can do it online. You don't have to come to the station, and it's quick. It does go to an officer, and they'll assign to a detective accordingly as well. And we are hiring. So that is one of our flyers right there. Like I said, we are beefing up for all the upcoming events. So if you guys know anyone that's interested in being a police officer, the city of Inglewood pays us well. We have great benefits, best job I know of. So if you know anyone who's looking for work, that is information right there. So here are some of the numbers right here. The main important one, outside of 911, is the top number, which is the non-emergency phone number, 310-412-8777. which is the non-emergency phone number, 310-412-8771, as well as our front desk, if you have any questions that you just want an officer to answer. The number for Detective Bureau is right there, as well as parking enforcement, community affairs, graffiti abatement, and then anonymous tip line as well. I will give you guys my email address. So if you have any questions, you can always email me, and I will get back to you in a timely manner. And my email just is fsmith@citvinglewood.org. So that's F as in Frank, smith@citvinglewood.org. And that's pretty much what I have. Anyone have any questions? Malcolm, get the microphone a little bit, yeah?
Thank you, Officer Smith. I live down the street from Benacue Elementary. I've called several times. We almost weekly have people doing donuts in front of Benacue Elementary, both on Yukon. And I don't know if anyone's aware of the bombing or fake bombing that happened at Benacue a couple of days ago. That was only reported on Channel 7, and I found out because they were filming in front of the school, and I went to ask to find out what's going on. I didn't hear Inglewood police report any of that or alert any of the parents. My kids don't go there. I'm fortunate enough, but I grew up, I was born and raised in Inglewood, and I see those children as my children. When people are doing donuts and they're doing drugs at night in front of Benacue, and I call and nothing happens, that upsets me. My kids go to private school. I'm blessed, but not everyone's blessed like me.
So I'll give you my information before I leave here?
I have it, and I call.
Okay. I just got to say what I have to say. So what we do, and it's for any concerns, I personally go out there and pull all call histories and see what's reported to us. And I make sure that officers go out there and do it. So that's why I encourage everyone. Every time you call, we have what we call an incident number. It pops up. So from Benacue or anywhere you call, if you call us, that's my way of doing homework to see how we can address the problem. So if you say that you call, I will look it up, and I'll try to see what we can do.
I'm sure IPD has my number on hot dial.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you for cutting me off.
Thank you so much. We understand that you ran for office and you're back here again, so thank you so much. Okay, yes, we have another hand right here, Malcolm. And we have one over here. Here you go.
Hey, gentlemen, ladies. I live in Inglewood over four to five years. When I got here, it was civil, nice and decent to live here. But now we got these youngsters or foreigners coming on our city. And especially when the events are on or not. My street... So I said, our citizens and foreigners. I mean, I said foreigners from other districts or other parts of the city. Especially when the events, or not when the events going on now. My street is like a racetrack. I'm living on 104th or 108th Street between Grand Shore and Yukon. People comes and park in my street, use my street like if it's the event parking, and take an Uber or Lyft or whatever it is. But most of all, the speed limit in my district, on my street, it should be slower because we've got kids that goes to school on Morningside and other schools around my district on 104th and Yukon. We don't have school, we don't have street signs for children or school district signs to say, slow down. We have kids around the area. We don't have signs that say, slow down. This is a district where we got to come out of our yard to get to where we going. You know, I had several accidents on my street. I was, I'm one that had an accident also, many times. So if you can help us by having a patrol on my street or change the sign, put a sign that says, kids are around, slow down. We appreciate it.
And then are you referring to the permit parking, sir? As far as you would like to get more information on adding the permit parking?
That is something else I would like to talk about.
Okay.
We just had a blast where two weeks ago, they came by. Mr. Malcolm knows about it.
Okay.
Came by and gave my whole street, everybody in my street, a parking ticket. It was a Sunday. Okay, nobody knows there was a parking, you know, we got the sign up there, but it was never told us in all these years that's enforced. So we would like to know also that how can we evade or elevate, not elevate, avoid being cited for parking? There's all stickers, or how we can do that?
Okay, thank you. Yes, so my assistant, Malcolm Penn, will get your information.
He did.
And, okay, good.
He helped me out a lot.
Yes, we'll be able to provide you additional information with some of those other concerns that you're having as well. And then we're gonna take a couple more questions, and then we're gonna move on to the next presentation.
Hi, my name is Karani Johnson. I live in the Renaissance. Do we still use the terminology watch commander? Are you our watch commander?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And then secondly, I almost got hit right in front of our house. I mean, in front of our community, trying to get in during the game time. It's ridiculous. People are so frustrated because the traffic isn't moving. And, you know, they don't pay attention to our guards, who are not traffic people. They're security guards. So we really need some help in that. I was wondering if we could reevaluate the situation because it's not really working well.
So each event is reevaluated after each event. And one reason why is because the crowd sizes change. So we do have a, we do have an agency that comes out and lay a cone pattern out strictly for PNC. And so then we also hire motor officers as well as traffic officers that's patrolling as well as watching everything on the cameras. So they're out there. I mean, you might not see them, but we look at an event with 70,000 people and a lot of cars leaving, and we're trying to cover as much area as possible. And just as you were stuck in traffic, unfortunately, our officers in cars are stuck in traffic. So we do our best. And I'm telling you, I work them. I sit down in what we call the dispatch center. We're looking at all cameras around. And our whole key thing is to keep changing lights to make sure traffic flows so that when the event ends, that we can have these people go to their designated next location as soon as possible.
So they're just speeding and moving around, and nobody is there to really handle that. There needs to be somebody there for us because somebody's gonna die.
And ma'am, if you, I can only say, if you come out one day and walk along PNC in an event, you're gonna see officers all along that route. So we're out there. I mean, they're out there. That's all I can say.
Thank you for your time. This question's for the councilperson. Is it within your budget to put speed bumps out? Because that's gonna eliminate a lot of the speeding. Before you answer that, this is for the LT. We all know that if worked in your profession, when it comes to traffic situations, there's education, enforcement, and engineering. Do you have the deployment, you know, the manpower to enforce education and, education and enforcement?
So we do implement speed bumps. There's a process, and so usually when there's a request, it usually will come from a, from a neighborhood watch group or a, another group within the community. And so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I?
Why can't it come from the police? Because they know where the speeders are.
I'm answering, I'm telling, I'm talking about the process.
Right, right. I understand that. But why can't the police submit, start the process instead of waiting for people in the community, which starts at the bottom of the process?
Can I, let me, let me...
I'm sorry for interrupting.
Okay, let me start again. Let me start again. So usually the requests will come if there's a neighborhood watch or a block club, and they feel like there's a lot of speeding on their block. Then they'll have a meeting. They'll invite me out to it or watch commander or officer lieutenant, and they'll explain the situation. They'll request speed bumps, and we'll talk about the process, and then we'll show them how to put in an application. So then the application goes through the city hall process, and it's several steps to it. And so if it goes through the process and then they qualify, then the speed bumps will be implemented. So that is how it goes. Sometimes it just depends on if there is a main road and if that is a well-traveled road for emergency services. Because if they have to slow down, it might be a challenge to implement speed bumps for the emergency services that are trying to get through on that main road. So, but there is a process, and we put everybody in contact and have them complete that application, and it goes from there.
And so to answer your question about the, the education. So we do work with the Office of Traffic Safety. This past month in August, we had our national, we came up with a lot of literature, we have updated literature. So if you have a block club meeting or anything like that, we have a bunch of community people together, or even at a school, and you want some information, you have my information. You call me. Either I'll go out or I have an officer go out there, and we'll give you handouts and answer any questions so that we can try to address and resolve any problems.
We're just gonna make the last question.
Hello, thank you for coming, Lieutenant Freeman Smith. My name is Ashley Taylor Vaughan. I'm a resident of Inglewood, and I work for ADAP, which is a substance use prevention program. What is Inglewood PD doing to address the illegal alcohol sales around the sidewalks and on the, during games or concerts?
And so we are working conjunction with our code enforcement. So after I'm done speaking, you will speak with Jerry Tucker, and he can answer that question on how, what are we doing for that?
All right, thank you so much. Let's give it up for Lieutenant Freeman. I, let's see, do I see our, there he is, our IUSD board member really quickly in the house, Brandon Myers. Let's give it up for Brandon. And I also see Laura Richardson's office here in the house. Let's give it up for her office, Amande. And I'm not sure if, am I missing anyone? Okay, just want to make sure. All right, and then, let's see. Let's go on to our code enforcement. So we have Jerry Tucker in the house. Y'all know Jerry Tucker. Jerry Tucker is the man that gets things done in the city of Inglewood. And so I'm really happy that he's here. He's able to present and that he will talk about some of the issues, the concerns that's popped up in the city of Inglewood and how he's handled it over the last several months. So let's welcome Jerry Tucker.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman. I'm always one that is very appreciative, first and foremost, for the opportunity that this city has given me. I'm also a District 4 resident, so my job I take personally. Every facet of this city I will touch to some degree. I've been called out late at night. I've been called early in the morning. After 31 years of service throughout many different cities, be it Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, Glendale, Los Angeles, I found that they do government okay. But the one thing that I found out personally and firsthand is that this city does people better. And then we move into that government phase. I have yet to ever meet a mayor or a council member that has so much ease of access. Many people have the mayor's phone number. Many people have the councilwoman's phone number and can reach out and get something done. I am so thankful that when I drive down the street with my son and my daughter, I can say yes. I had my hand into that. I saw that move. I saw that better. Now, on the code enforcement side, we ultimately deal with those things that are property maintenance-driven, meaning someone has neglected their property. They didn't cut the grass. The window's broken. One of the things that is very important to me, though, is to ensure that the investment that you have made into your property stays your investment and makes certain that it is not impacted. Because if you are living next door to a home or a house that, eh, maybe the paint is chipping, the grass is brown, and, you know, they're not taking care of their property, well, that impacts your comps. That impacts the value that the mayor always talks about. You know, we are probably sitting in a city that has million-dollar properties now. Now, I've been here a little over 25 years in this city and call it home. Mine is not yet at a million dollars, getting close to it, but I am thankful for that. But more importantly, I'm thankful that this city gave me an opportunity to come back home and be the code enforcement manager because in this industry, there are not terribly too many people that look like us that get this opportunity. So I am truly thankful that the mayor and my director, Chris Jackson, and the councilwoman, they saw fit to reach down and bring one of their own into this house. So with that, I can belabor that point. But as you can see, code enforcement, we have an administrative process. That process is very litigious and it is very slow. It does not happen overnight. As you can see in some of these photos, you can find properties that are derelict, not being maintained correctly. I can assure you, I can promise you this. If you call my office, we will stay on this until it is resolved. However, the reality of our city is we have an older constituencies here. Not everybody has a lot of excess money to take care of some things. We do have some senior citizens that have fallen on hard times. I take that into consideration. That humanistic aspect of my life comes through at that point. I will work with you. I will give you additional time. And if your property does qualify, though I do not oversee the program, the city does provide a $15,000 grant for those that are in hard times. It is income qualifying. At the end of this message, I'll pass out my cards for those that want more information, and I'll put you in contact with those people. We also deal with graffiti. Separate from graffiti abatement, which they can grab the telephone poles or a wall at a low angle. But if it is up high, we will put the responsibility back on the property owner to clear that out quickly, all right? Also weeds and trash. We don't want to see that. We don't. There's not too much you got to say about that. Cut your grass, pick up the trash, put it in a trash can. That is the simplest thing that you can do. Malcolm? We also do interior inspections of residential dwellings, all right? So if you live in an apartment and you have a property owner that refuses to fix the leaky faucet, they fix the heating system, they refuse to fix the broken window. By state law, the city can order that property owner to make those changes, to make those upgrades in some instances, all right? Our process is slow, but we are very dogmatic. I will say the longest case I have personally ever held myself was probably eight years. I am that bulldog that will stay there and pester you until you fix the problem. Why? Because someone needs to live there in a safe, clean, habitable space. This is not up for debate. You do not get to take the rent money and then say, ah, I'll get to you when I feel like it. These are pictures of deteriorated kitchens, water heater, bad electrical. Now, we are separate from that of a building inspector. Code enforcement officers, we go out, we identify what the problem is, and we tell you, hey, you need to fix it. We do interface heavily with building and safety and planning, all right? So keep in mind, we are not building inspectors, but we will call these violations out and get them corrected. Malcolm? Also, we deal with unpermitted construction. So if you are adding on to your home or you're remodeling the bathroom, a building permit is needed. Here's the importance of a building permit. It is not a money grab. I can promise you that. This city does not charge enough on the building permits like other cities around, where they grab big money for a little... grab big money for little, small projects. But the importance of it is this, if you are selling your home and you said, hey, I put in a new plumbing system, or this ADU on the back is legal, you're making money off of that. It is nothing better than to say, hey, here's my permit that made it legal. Now, on the backside, if you converted your garage or you did an addition without that permit, eh, you might not necessarily monetarily benefit from that legally. Now, my family, I drive them nuts. They call me and say, hey Jerry, can you come by? I'm getting ready to buy this property. Okay, you gonna have my eyes looking at it. I'll do the permit search for my family members and say, hey, you know what, that back room there isn't legal. So guess what, the value drops, or at least you have a negotiating tool. Now, the worst thing on the backside is if someone gets injured in that unpermitted construction area, a good insurance adjuster won't go to your house first, they'll go to city hall first and pull the permit history. And if you do not have a permit history, oh yeah, they're gonna smile at you and say, oh man, that was really hard that that happened and this person has gotten injured or whatever. But guess what? We're not covering you because you didn't go get that permit like you were supposed to and you end up eating that. And in the worst case, and it has happened here in this city, in the eight years that I've been here as the manager, I had one person fatally not make it out of a converted garage. All right? So if you have a converted garage and you got people staying there, don't do that. That is not a place for people to live unless it has been reconstructed under the ADU process and gotten its building permit. Though this looks nice, this is a remodel. Looks beautiful, didn't get a permit. Electrical systems, my favorite. Electrical is one of those things that in the middle of the night, when you are asleep, if it was done wrong, it will come back and bite you. It will come back and haunt you at 2:00 in the morning while you are in your deep sleep. So please, make certain that you're using licensed electricians, that they get their building permits, make certain that it is done correctly. Unless you are a contractor yourself, you relying upon that person doing that work to do it right. You paying big money. Our job is to come out, be neutral, but make certain that it's done right so we can give you the satisfaction, we the city, give you the satisfaction that it is done correctly. Next slide, thank you. Street vending. Street vending. In the state of California, street vending was decriminalized, I can't remember exactly, but probably about 10, 11 years ago. At one point in time, it was a crime. The state of California said decriminalize it, just like they did with parking citations and they did with cannabis. So it falls into the world of code enforcement. I will use this example. If you were to go down Manchester, going east, the moment you hit Western, which is in Los Angeles, that looks different than the city of Inglewood. I can promise you this, when you have a bunch of pop-up restaurants or shoe sales or perfume sales on the corner, there is somebody over in the corner watching and waiting to rob them. We don't want to bring extra crime in here, we're trying to get rid of that stuff. When this pops up on your street corners, it invites problems. I have people, staff, that will stay over longer to make certain that it is addressed. Now, on the health side, I can show you many, many pictures and I do not want to gross you out, but some of this food is adulterated and it is not kept in safe conditions. For those that partake of those hot dogs at the stadium, please don't. I have impounded carts, I have impounded vehicles, roaches, ants, the whole nine yards. I had a lady on Osage, next block over from SoFi, said, Mr. Tucker, I have lived here 20 years and I've never had roaches in my house until they started popping up with these food carts. And what happens is, at the end of the day, when they don't sell it, they dump it in the gutter. They get back and they go. And unfortunately, I do know where a good amount of them, but they on the east side, east side of Los Angeles. They don't live here. They'll take our resources, they'll dump it in the middle of the street and then Public Works, Tony, his crew has to come by and clean that mess up the next day. It is not fair to you at all. Next slide, Malcolm. Firework enforcement. Anything that goes up in the air, big boom, in the state of California is illegal. Unfortunately, having been here for 25-plus years, I know, we enjoy our fireworks way too much. But every year, somebody in the city of Inglewood gets harmed or damaged or mutilated because they're playing around with these fireworks. My staff has gone out in the past, throughout the community, we will confiscate the illegal ones, not the safe and sane ones, but the illegal ones, $500 ticket is given, hoping to help educate folks that this is not a safe thing to do. Cannabis. So, probably four or five years ago, especially up and down Crenshaw, there was cannabis, 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 cannabis shop, one after the other. I got a call, the police chief got a call, city manager's office got a call from the mayor and said, hey, meet on the ninth floor right now, we need to talk about this. Great, no problem. What do you got, boss? I need this to disappear. He got on the phone, walked out the room. I thought, okay, is he coming back to finish giving us instructions? Nope. The order was given. So, in conjunction with the police department, code enforcement will go in, we will find a way to shut your water off, we will find a way to shut your electricity off, we'll find a way to get you out of there. Now, the locations that are identified in this photo, there's not all of them, but 20-plus, none of them with state license. Now, I recognize that in the state of California, it's legal. Do your thing, not a problem, just bring me the right paperwork, get you set up, do it the right way. Unfortunately, I have yet to see one ever come in this community with a license. I remember sitting at the counter one day and this very well-dressed gentleman, for lack of a better word, asked for me personally and said, hey, Mr. Tucker, I want to set up a marijuana dispensary in Inglewood. And I'll be honest with you, I was outside of my character just a little bit, because I do take this personally. And I asked him, where are you from? Oh, I'm from Orange County. And I'm thinking to myself, you didn't drove all the way up through Orange County a good half hour, 45 minutes, and you decide you want to come to Inglewood and sell your weed, or, I'm sorry, cannabis. Huh? And I looked at him bewildered and I said, this doesn't make sense. And I said, well, why would you do that? You've been passed all these other communities that I know they smoking weed, but yet you came here. His arrogant answer was, and please forgive me, I do have to repeat it verbatim, my investors have more money than Jesus. And I said, well, tell your investors, if I meet them, they're gonna be broke. So, here's my card, if you have any other questions, let me not find you out on the street. Left, gone. Today, I don't have any dispensaries up and down Crenshaw at all. Not a one. Not a one. When they do pop up in other portions of the city, my team, along with the police department, we react very quickly, we apply the pressure where it can be applied, and we will stay on it until it is removed and gone. All right? Malcolm? The code enforcement process is different than that of the police department. We use what's called an administrative enforcement process. Long story short, a lot of letters, a lot of fines. We have kind of like that baseball concept, strike one, strike two, strike three. Strike one, we give you a letter, no fine at all. Hey, Mr. Jones, hey, Mr. Sanchez, whoever, whatever, hey, you've got this violation on your property, it needs to be corrected. 30 days later, we come back, we revisit it. If it is not done, then we will issue the next letter and the first fine. Second, third, and then we get to the final. The final is where it comes to me and I have to determine if this matter has moved into a criminal proceeding at that point, which involves our city attorney's office. Very few people want to take us there, very few. But we do. We have administrative fines, civil and criminal injunctions, recordation, all the way up to receivership. Receivership is where I'm not paying, you ain't making me, this is a blight upon the city, and the court can then order that that property be taken away from the property owner and then rehabbed and then ultimately sold off. In my total 20 years of doing code enforcement, I have only had to do two, I have yet to have to do one here. Most people decide to listen to me before we get to that point. Malcolm? So, that is the end of this presentation. I feel free to ask, or ask your questions. I know I've got a time limit, I will respect that. So, Councilwoman, if you want to select or...
My name is Shawnee. I'm on Imperial Highway between Lamoli and Dan, the old UA, United Health Plan building. Who's responsible for the upkeep of that building?
Hey neighbor, not too far from you. So, the upkeep of the building is that of the property owner. My group does have a case that is on that. That property ownership, for lack of a better word, is very reluctant. Okay? Unfortunately, the city does not have a crew to go in and make those necessary repairs. Though you see the condition, do know, do believe, you have my word, my staff is behind pushing the paperwork that is necessary to take us to that next level. Some people just don't want to move and do what they're supposed to do. Hello.
My name's Ashley Taylor Vaughan. I asked Lieutenant Freeman Smith, but what are we doing about the illegal alcohol sales and vending, like, you know, in the coolers?
Okay, yes. Ultimately, we take them. Here's what that looks like. My staff, when I first got here, we were charged with food-based violations. The alcohol was left to the alcohol beverage control and the police department. Alcohol beverage control is kind of slow in getting out here. The mayor moved us into it, but then it moved from the criminal side, which is the business and professions, a bunch of technicalities, over to vending. And like I said earlier, vending is an administrative action. However, we still have the legal right to impound those items that are adulterated or unlicensed. To date, I think we've taken over 300 carts, we have taken well over 100 coolers. Now, unfortunately, this is like chasing sand at the beach. So if you've ever been at SoFi or driving up and down Prairie, there is way more of them than it is of us. However, however, I will say this, when they see us, at least they have the decency to take off running. Now, we don't chase them. If you're running, you're not selling. But to answer your question, we will confiscate your items. The alcohol is never given back to them, it is immediately disposed of. If they want to come back and get their little plastic cooler, they're free to do so, but only after they pay their fine. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Um...
Just give it a second, I'll wait, I'll wait for you.
So, thank you for answering that, that helps a lot. So I live in Carlton Square, so yeah, I see those all the time, even when I'm going to Target. But with public consumption, it's like, it's like everybody's like super drunk now and then that causes DUIs. So do you partner with like ABC and IPD to, I know it's hard, like you said, it's hard to fix it, but like what, because you know, we have the World Cup coming up, we have LA 28 coming up, what can we do? Like I said, I work for ADAP, which is a substance use prevention and control agency. I'm just worried about that because we have schools around here and, you know, I live right there too and like DUIs are up.
Okay. I get that. Unfortunately, in code enforcement, I don't arrest people, so I don't handle the conception portion of it, that's going to be the police department. Picture this as a three-layer cake. Code enforcement tries to grab the low-hanging fruit. Those that are habitual are really problematic, then our police department steps in with ABC, and just to tip you off, they are working this Sunday, you know, at the game. So, you know, that's inside information, don't tell everybody on that one. But code enforcement, we try to remove that low-hanging fruit, but at no time do I deal with the drunks or the DUIs, that is way outside of my scope of training and ability to enforce. Okay? So, but that would fall into the police department. You're welcome.
Officer Tucker, thank you for everything that you and your team do. I appreciate your responsiveness. I know oftentimes, these are very difficult meetings to get constructive feedback, but we do appreciate you and your team. I have two questions. One, what can we do about the apartment complexes between, off of Imperial, between Artith and Van Ness? As a homeowner on Hudson, a lot of the tenants are dumping their furniture, blocking our access to our driveway. I think we should start considering holding the property owners accountable for that.
In order to address that, there are multiple layers. I will address the code enforcement side, there is some Public Works and there is some PD. Code enforcement will get in and yes, we will cite owners that are adjacent to those areas that are impacted and we will order them to clean it up. However, if it is an immediate hazard, our Public Works folks will come out and get that removed. And unfortunately, and really at the core of this, is it's just bad neighbors being bad. And unfortunately, I can't change your mind to pick up the trash. I can come behind you and say, hey, you don't pick up that trash, it's gonna be a citation and hopefully you learn a lesson from that, that that is not what I am supposed to do. But, in a room full of folks that I'm familiar with, this just goes back to home training.
Yeah, I think it's, it is that, but let me just add a little bit more context. They're dumping the trash on our side, on our gates, as the homeowner. So it's one thing to dump it in the alley...
So the alley is dumping...
Yes. Leaning it on our gates. So, you know, when our gates fall over, we're responsible for that. The other question that I had for you as well is, in our last meeting, you brought up an example of issue you had with some chickens in the neighborhood.
Yep.
So, we have something similar, but not similar, which we have an increase in cats and kittens. And I've called code enforcement because we have one of our neighbors on our street that is perpetuating this problem. She's feeding them, she has about five bowls on her porch. You know, I'm not an animal owner, but why am I responsible for picking up cat poop? Also, we're noticing an increase in flies because of this poop. So, I don't understand, you know, Animal Control said they can't come out and do anything because they're a protected species, but yet they're not holding this neighbor accountable who's perpetuating this problem because she's an animal lover.
So, code enforcement, unfortunately, we do not regulate the animal enforcement world, that is Animal Control. However, I don't let it just ride there. So the chicken situation that you had mentioned, which was, I think, 110th Street, we had a property owner, for whatever reason, he left his property, he left the chicken coop, literally, door open, said deuces, I'm out, bye, left, and these chickens ran through the entire neighborhood. Literally. Along with, I don't see Claudette, who's, you know, up on the ninth floor, we made a phone call to Animal Control and said, this is not acceptable. Well, Mr. Tucker, we don't, no, 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 we have a contract with you, we need you out there. I went out there, my staff went out there to make certain that Animal Control did what they were supposed to. It was interesting to watch people chase chickens up and down the street and catch them. We eventually got into the backyard of a property that was less than maintained, and I kid you not, this tree was probably about 100 feet tall, 50 feet wide, it touched fence to fence. And I found out something interesting. Chickens can roost in trees. I didn't know that, I'm not a country boy. All these chickens were in that tree. Talked to the property owner and said, hey, your tree is overgrown, that's a violation. But before you correct that violation, let me coordinate with Animal Control, so when you do cut that tree, we can at least have them fencing the property and then gather these chickens. Came back to work the next week, guy decided he wanted to cut the tree down. I said, man, hey, we had an agreement, let me get Animal Control out here so we can get these chickens, you know, because they were on top of people's cars, they were eating the vegetable gardens, they were wreaking havoc. Eventually, we got the chickens taken care of. Move on down the road. Now, with regards to the lady with the cat, I have literally spoken to her about that last week. I said, that ain't necessarily good, that is not a good thing. And of course, she got mad and hoo-ha'd and, you know, I've got my rights as an animal lover. I said, well, neighbors also have rights to enjoy their property without that level of interference. She has some other violations that are on the property, so we are going to go through that process because we are legally required to do so, and we will see this thing through until it is corrected. Now, you and I have worked on a very contentious case, so I thank you for your kind words, I do appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. He is a very hard-working code enforcement gentleman. Appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you. He is a very hard-working code enforcement gentleman. Appreciate you, Jerry. Appreciate you. Before we get ready for our next few presentations, we have some really exciting announcements. So, I'm going to bring the two announcements up here really quickly to move things out of order just a little bit, shake things up a little bit. I like to shake it up. So, the first one is, ta-da, ta-da, Verizon Wireless. So, we're going to bring up Jesus Ramon, Vice President, Government Affairs. And for all of those of you in District Four that are always asking the question, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Boy, I got an announcement for you. Here we go. Let's give it up. Jesus, here we go.
Well, hello, everyone. My name is Jesus Ramon. I'm Vice President of Government Affairs for Verizon. Before I give you the announcement, I just want to say that I was born and raised in Puerto Rico, and we had a lot of chickens, and they always slept on the trees. So, and had we seen some chickens that didn't belong to us, they would have made it into our rice soup. So, I've got an announcement for you. It's, I think it's really exciting for us because, you know, when the Super Bowl was coming around in 2022, so Super Bowl 56, we decided to put in some really significant investment into Inglewood. We spent over $119 million deploying fiber and wireless facilities throughout the city of Inglewood. That's big money, $119 million. But, you know, we can't do that alone. We could only do that in partnership with the city. So, Louis Atwell, when he was the Director of Public Works, helped us out to get all the permits that we needed to deploy the fiber that comes with wireless stuff, to make sure that we got the right power for it, to make sure that we had all the permits. So, we continued our efforts to deploy wireless facilities here, and over the course of the last three years, worked with the city to make sure that we got all of the permits, respected all of the processes that the city had to deploy a massive, what we call macro, a big wireless facility at Darby Park. This facility is going to be a 65-foot-tall, what we call monopoleptis, that has several sectors of antennas so that we can actually cover a wide area of the Darby Park and the surrounding. And I'll just say this. We're going to have an onsite emergency generator. I don't know if you guys suffer through public safety power shut-offs or commercial power going off. Then you don't have communications. Us having a generator there will help us make sure that we have commercial power, not commercial power, but backup power, so that you have actual communications when the power is down. That's really important for resiliency. It's important for public safety, so you can call 911. And we're really happy that the city has partnered with us. And our champion at the city has been the Councilwoman. So, thank you so much, Councilwoman Falk. So, there are so many details I can provide. I'm going to answer questions in a second, but let me just tell you exactly where we anticipate the coverage to happen. So, it will improve coverage, again, wireless coverage, approximately to the north beyond Manchester, to the south beyond Century, to the east around Van Ness, and to the west beyond Prairie, given the way we're configuring this particular macro site. So, we're going to have better communications, better wireless coverage. If you're not a Verizon Wireless subscriber, here's my push. You're going to get better service with Verizon Wireless. Come to us, please. Willing to answer questions now?
All right. Do we have any questions really quickly of our Verizon offices? Yes. Let me see the gentleman in the back.
Hi, my name is Jordan Murn. I'm a District Four resident. Verizon Wireless has one of the largest fiber optic networks in the country. When are we going to get Verizon internet in Inglewood?
So, this is a very, very good question. And let me just say right now that you should have wireless internet on your phone, so that should already be there. We are in the process of acquiring another company called Frontier Communications. Frontier Communications has one of the largest fiber networks in the state. In fact, back in 2021, they came out of bankruptcy, and as a condition of coming out of bankruptcy, the California Public Utilities Commission required it to deploy a whole bunch of fiber. It's one of the reasons why we're purchasing it. And what we anticipate is that with that fiber, we will be able to improve Frontier's service. Frontier will become Verizon again, and you'll get that internet through a fiber connection, what we call fiber to the premises. But in addition to that, and I think this is another really important thing, is we have something that we call fixed wireless access and 5G home. So, to the extent that we are able to create additional capacity by deploying additional macros or wireless facilities, then we can ask, actually provide you with fixed wireless access at a very low cost compared to the cable companies, and you'll have really, really nice wireless internet using those wireless facilities. The one thing I forgot to mention when I was giving the announcement is when this macro facility would be available. So, as of right now, we're already in construction. We've broken ground. We expect the pole to be up in October. If all the stars align and we get the power from Edison, because we need power from Edison, then the weather cooperates such that it doesn't start to rain. It looks like this season might be a little rainy season. But if we get everything done, we'll be able to have this up in the air by the end of the year. So, that's really good. But if it doesn't align, it's more going to be like first quarter of 2026. We're working our tails off to make it happen sooner because it's been, we've been working on this for three years, guys, people. So, this three years, it's been a long time. But again, we have to respect all the processes, and we respected them, and we're ready to go. I just want to say, back to the gentleman that was asking about the internet. In the little grab bags that we gave you, the little swag bag, there is a flyer, and that flyer looks something like this, okay? And on the other side, there is a little explanation of the transaction. And what we're trying to do is get support for the transaction. Where, you know, we need the California Public Utilities Commission to actually approve our acquisition of Frontier and approve it as quickly as possible so we could get these benefits out to the community as soon as possible. So, if you have a moment, look at that, and there's a call to action there. Just do what you feel is the right thing, please. Any other questions?
Hi, my name is Richard Heath. I'm a resident of District Four. My question is, I'm a Spectrum Mobile user, and I was told when I got Spectrum Mobile that they utilize Verizon's towers. Is that true?
It is.
Okay.
It is. But come to Verizon, you'll get even better service. Like, our customer service is excitingly good.
Let me see. Don't we want, should I talk to them and see if we can do like a special little, I don't know, something to get City of Inglewood residents, a group of y'all over, a group discount? Y'all, would y'all, y'all want me to try and, y'all want me to try and do something like that? Yeah? See, Jesus, they want me to do something like that. So, I'll work on that, y'all. I'll work on that.
Just one point, because that's a really important sort of reminder that we actually have something that's called Lifeline Service for our wireless through our subsidiary Track Phone, Safe Link, Walmart Family Mobile, where you can actually get a phone service for free if you sign up for Lifeline and you're income-eligible. So, think about that.
So, all right, Verizon is here. Tower's going up hopefully by the end of the year. It's going down. So, let's thank them for those cute bags they gave out, right? Thank you guys so much. I want to shout out my buddy back there, Christian Redarte. I mean, the three years we've been on the phone, like, okay, Christian, where are we at with this deal? Where are we at? Where are we at? So, it's been a lot of hard work, but we got it done. It's here, and you all will benefit. So, I hope that you guys will be happy, and I hope that we will no longer have to say, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? So, let's give it up, Verizon Wireless. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Okay. And really quickly, I have one more really fun announcement. I am going to have Henry Priest come up really quickly. He has a very exciting announcement before we get back to our presentations. This is, I'm not getting even, I'm not getting even announced, though. Come on up. I'm going to let you tell them what is coming up in the month of October really quickly. Let's start. Let's go.
All right, all right. Clap once if you can hear my voice. Clap twice if you've heard of Darth Vader. All right. So, what I'm doing is, I'm bringing a film festival to the city of Inglewood. It's titled the Film Festival at Hollywood Park. I was asked to bring in a really big event that's going to be seven days, about 125 movie screens. And I want to read some names off of some of the people that are in the movies that we're going to showcase. And this is important because it's not about showing movies. It's part of the economic development of the community, and I'll get to that in about one minute. So, I need your participation. If I say a name and then you heard of this name, just go like this. Ready? Tyra Reid. She was in American Pie, okay? Amy Schumer. All right. Edward James Olmos. All right, all right. Sean Penn. Okay. Who else we got here? Charles Burnett. Okay, there you go. Jimmy Kimmel. Carrot Top. All right. And our big one this year, our opening night film, those are all people that are in the films that I'm showing here in this city. Our big one, our opening night film is with Seth Rogen, and then Keanu Reeves. Okay. So, we're bringing those people, those films, to this city to showcase their work. Because the way film festivals go is, they're artists. They want to show their films so they can get distribution and investors. It's part of their marketing thing, but it's bigger than that. What we do is, we actually provide economic development for the city. Tribeca Film Festival brings $1 billion to the city of New York. Because when these filmmakers come, people buy the tickets, they rent the rooms, they go to the restaurants, and they are in town for a week spending money, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and entertainment. So, Hollywood Park said, Mr. Priest, could you please bring something over here? Because everyone knows the Chargers and the Rams and Taylor Swift in the stadium. But they asked me to bring the arts and bring the community together through the arts. So, I'm working with, here we go one more time. If you have ever heard of the Urban Scholar Academy, go like this. So, we're showing nine films through that program. We're showing films from maybe about 10 other filmmakers that are from Inglewood. This is not the Inglewood Film Festival. It's the Hollywood Park Film Festival, bringing the whole world to the city. But we also have educational programs. So, for example, how to be a director, how to go to an audition, how to write a script, how to edit a film. So, we have all these programs for people to learn. So, you see this packed room right here? Every single morning, I'm going to have 20 packed rooms like this for seven days to teach the community how to participate. Because Inglewood is doing great things, and Hollywood Park is investing in the community. They are building a film studio with five sound stages, and we need that seventh-grade kid, eighth-grade kid, ninth-grade kid to know that when they graduate from high school, they can come over to the studio and slap down a resume. Because they went through the workshops. So, let's give it up to Hollywood Park because they're doing great things. Let's give it up to Dion Falk for helping us out over here. And also, how about Verizon? Let's give Verizon, because they're sponsoring today. With that, I have one special guest for you, a filmmaker here that wants to talk about her film and what it means to be a filmmaker in Inglewood.
Thank you so much for that introduction. Thank you so much. I am so proud to be here. My name is Lupe Montiel. I've been living in Inglewood since 1975. Can't remember from Mexico. Yes, yes. And just want to invite you guys to come out and support the Hollywood Park Film Festival. I'm in a film called Reunion. It's a very beautiful film about a family. It's heartwarming, and we want to see you guys all here. So, we're here to invite you, and we hope you will support our films. And I am an artist here from Inglewood, so it would mean a lot to us for you to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So, they will be highlighting the Hollywood Park Film Festival at Synapolis. And that is going down. It will be in the newsletter. Our newsletter will be going out again. I think we had it in last month's newsletter, right? So, it will be in this month's newsletter as well. So, please check that out. Thank you guys so much. Thank you, Verizon Wireless. Thank you, Henry Priest. All right. All right. So, now, next up, we are bringing up our William Thompson. He is parking in traffic, and he will be talking about what is happening with our traffic operations in the city of Inglewood. He will give us some of the trends that's happening and let us know what we can do and what we can expect. And hopefully, things are better out there, right? Are things better out there? Okay, great. All right, here we go. Let's give it up.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. I'm usually the last guy anybody wants to invite to a party, the guy that writes tickets. So, I'll make it brief, and I'm going to be in the back of the room after this. And I've got cards that you can call me directly if you have a specific problem regarding parking, parking enforcement, or traffic control. I brought with me a gift for the Councilwoman. She calls me frequently and says, you know, Bill, the residents are calling, and they never see you. They never see parking enforcement. They never see par, traffic control. So, what we did was, oh, yeah, so I've got this poster here, and it shows the parking enforcement citations that we issued in the month of August, a little over 7,000. This helps because a lot of times, residents surrounding the SoFi Stadium and our venues, there's a couple of streets that are always having a tough time just west of Prairie, Osage, near the hospital. And this way, I can kind of show them and share this graph with them, whatever month it is, and let them know that we are out there and we are doing parking enforcement. We've seen big changes in some of these streets where there's a little bit more places to park, less congestion, but it's going to take a while. I also oversee traffic control for the events. And the easiest suggestion I can give you there is, when the, an hour before a football game or an hour after a football game, that may not be the best time to go out for a Sunday drive. Because that, we've got it so that inbound traffic kind of staggers in, but outbound, initially, when the stadium opened, it took us over two hours to clear the streets. And we're a little under 90 minutes now. So, there has been an improvement. Tony's going to come up here in a minute from Public Works. The engineering aspect of this traffic control is extraordinary. There's cameras all over the place. There's a command center within SoFi Stadium. And between the command center with Public Works engineers and my crew on the street, we're able to kind of hit the hotspots and keep things moving. Typically, on a SoFi van, I've got about 60 traffic control officers out there and about a half a dozen parking enforcement. One of the days that we find the most challenging is, we call it the trifecta days, when all three venues are running at the same time. Because then you've got over 20,000 cars involved in the traffic. That may take a little bit longer, but the system works. But again, I would always say, you know, there's just probably a certain time on an event, especially the outbound that's the toughest to navigate through. But you figure after about an hour, hour and a half, things are kind of back to normal. So, we appreciate that partnership that I have with Public Works and their engineering team. So, I'm going to be in the back of the room to kind of keep things brief. I wanted to just say, Malcolm, great guy. We talk every day, right? Okay? And so, when you call your Councilwoman or Malcolm with problems, they're on me the next day. And then Malcolm, he'll call me three times the following day to make sure I got it done. So, but I'll be in the back there. I've got cards. Sometimes parking enforcement problems that pertain to you are a little bit complicated, but I can always work things out for you. Anyway, thank you very much.
Do we have any quick questions for Bill at all? Uh-oh, we got a couple of questions, Bill. Couple of questions. Let's see. Let's get over here in the pink shirt, or do we have one of it this way?
My name is Andre. I'm in Renaissance. The only issue is that the light, you guys check the timing. At the event, you don't switch it back. So, it takes about 10 minutes to make a left out of Renaissance Way. So, we need you guys to like, whoever is, put it on your schedule to come in after street sweeping to set it back.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely correct. And I'm gonna, I'll give you a phone number, you know, when you come back later, I'll give you a direct phone number where you can call and they can deactivate that right away.
Hi, Bernadette, District 3, two blocks from SoFi, woo-hoo. However, on event days, I see your wonderful signs, "No event parking, no event parking." They are disregarding that completely. The cars are back-to-back, blocking driveways. So, what are we gonna do about that? Just asking.
Well, on this poster here, that's, that's the magic right there. Now, some, some folks will call me and say, "Well, you know, Bill, that sometimes a ticket's cheaper than parking on property." Because you know, SoFi originally started out at $60 to park on their lot. Now, it's 100, 100 and 120. But, the, your council members, a few years back, did the perfect thing, is that it's ticket and/or tow. So, we're getting close to bringing the tow trucks out if it does not continually improve a little bit. So, that's coming.
This may or may not be a quick question. Going eastbound during or after an event on Florence or Manchester, like you basically are stuck there for like 10 to 15 minutes. And I'm sure there's a science, but how do we get like residents home? Because I can't, like I'm literally stuck there and I've had to do some things that I don't want the law enforcement to know to get home because there's no other means to get home after an event safely.
Well, as long as you don't try and do, go into the westbound lanes, you'll be okay. One of the snafus that we've got there at Manchester and Prairie as you go eastbound is our, our friendly Ubers, especially the Uber Blacks, the SUVs. They, they pick up their guests up there on Manchester and they'll double and triple park. Fortunately, you know, we do have law enforcement that'll come out and kind of help push them along. Now Florence, we don't get involved with Florence. My quick way to get around town is I'll take some street up to Florence and go east to Crenshaw and come down if it's an outbound traffic. But, we're, we're getting better at that. We've got the, California Highway Patrol has come in to help us on some of the events. Their specialty is traffic enforcement and we're hoping that'll have an effect.
Hi, I'm District 4 and I'm on Imperial Highway as I said before. But what do we do for weekend parking? Because we're getting cited for Saturday and Sunday parking when we can't park in the alley, we can't park for so long on Den or Sims. So, what do the residents that's on Imperial Highway do for parking?
Yeah, the big issue with, you talking about like eastbound on Imperial? Because after a certain time, that, that's a, that's a traffic lane? Is that what you're?
I assume it must have just changed because all these years, we were able to, only, only Mondays is, street sweeping is on Mondays. And then after 3:00, it's from 3:00 to 6:00, no parking, and then you could park. But now, we're being cited on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, for parking. But like I said, it must have changed and we haven't been notified because we're, we're only the residential that's on the south side of Imperial. The opposite side is commercial. And so, when we, we don't have nowhere to park because we can't get, park in the alleys behind the garages because they cite us there too.
Right. Well, let me give you my card when I walk out of here and let's talk about that more. But I know that eastbound curb lane changed from a parking lane to a through lane between certain hours to kind of lessen the traffic at that intersection of Imperial and Crenshaw because your district's doing all that fine work on Crenshaw and making improvements. And they're also making improvements at that intersection. I'll give you my card on the way out.
All right, well, thank you so much. Let's give it up for Bill Thompson. All right. So, next up is our, one of our newer members in City Hall, one of our new family members. It is Tony Olmos and he has been doing such an amazing job. I, I have, I was in his ear so much with the beginning of the capital improvement project that I wanted to start on Crenshaw Boulevard. And I was wearing him out, y'all. I was like calling him all the time. "What about this, Tony? What about that, Tony? When are we gonna get started?" And I know, I, I know I worked you. I know I worked you. But hopefully, you guys are appreciating and seeing a beautiful Crenshaw Boulevard come to life. Are you guys kind of seeing a little bit of it come to life a little bit? I know that, I know that it is a little bit inconvenient, but the finished product will be absolutely amazing. And so, with that said, he's gonna tell you a little bit more about it, but let's give it up for Tony Olmos.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Hello, District 4. Nice to see everybody here. It's such great energy. I've already been here a little over a year and I'm just having a great time. And I'll just echo what the mayor said, you know, in terms of Inglewood. A lot of cities right now are cutting back on some of their expenses, you know, in terms of even projects and things like that. And here in the city, we're actually investing more in a lot of the basic infrastructure that's near and dear to what you would want, like sidewalks and paving. So, what I want to do today, I'll tell you a little bit about the department, what my area responsibility is first, so at least you can be familiar with what my department does and my, my area responsibility. Then I just want to highlight some of the projects that we have going on. And we have a lot of projects. And I can be here for an hour talking about all of them, but I just want to give you some highlights in terms of what we're working on. So, first, just to talk about my responsibilities for the department, be the first, next, first slide. So, we take care of everything within what they call the public right-of-way. You know, from one side of the sidewalk, one side of the street, from the back of the sidewalk to the other side of the sidewalk. That includes the streetlights, that includes the pavement, that includes the utilities underneath the street, the stormwater, the storm drains, the water in the sewer. We work together with our Parks Department that's in charge of the trees. We take care of the sidewalks and, and really, everything else that's in the street. So, when there's potholes, if you have any complaints about uplifted sidewalk, those are the requests we always take in and we'll review them carefully and then prioritize them so that we're able to put them on the next projects that we can come in. The potholes we'll take care of right away. But when it comes down to sidewalks, we'll put them on our next project list. And as you, and as I'll show you in a bit, there's quite a bit of investment being made in streets and sidewalk, which is the fundamental projects that we like to do because that really affects the quality of life for our residents. And engineering, this is a really important function. I know Bill talked about it in terms of the traffic side. Engineering does what they call the capital improvement program. All these projects that we have to put out there for construction, they have to develop a plan. So, they'll develop a plan that then we put out to bid. And then, once we get the bids in, we get a contractor on board and we oversee the construction. These gentlemen over here, you know, they're the ones that help build the, these kinds of projects. So, we appreciate the partnership that we have with them. So, thank you guys for hanging out. So, that's what our department does. And just to highlight some of the projects, maybe the next slide. Like I said, the bread and butter of what we do is our annual Streets and Alley's project. Over time, before, there wasn't much investment in that and the mayor has talked about it before, where we had to defer a lot of these improvements because there weren't no resources. I'm proud to report that the current project that we have, that we already got bids for, that we're gonna be going to City Council next month for an award of contract, and this is citywide, is a $6.4 million investment in the streets and alleys. That's fantastic. A lot of cities will only put a project out for maybe $2 to $3 million a year in investing in that. And what we're trying to do and working with the mayor and City Council members is trying to increase that every year as we go so that we can, you can start seeing a visible difference in the quality of the pavement, the quality of your sidewalks, and just really focusing in on making the city feel and look differently so that, you know, everything that the city's doing and accomplishing is reflective in our infrastructure. So, in District 4, I just, I just did a little synopsis here of what we're gonna be doing this next contract. The area in blue on the upper right-hand side, those streets are gonna be slurry sealed. Slurry sealed, because the streets are in pretty good shape already, but we want to make sure that we're gonna extend the life of them. So, we come in with, with the oil-based surface that we go, we seal the cracks and we do that, then that extends the life of that pavement and makes them look new once again. The areas in blue near the south side, that's on 115th, 116th, those have, they're a lot more deteriorated, so we're gonna do some grinding, what we call grinding and overlay. We're gonna take off some of the pavement surface and then we're gonna put back some new pavement. And the rest of it, it looks like we're not doing much because we've been doing a lot of work in this in the last few years. So, District 4 pavement is already better, but we're always, we always use our pavement management. So, as we monitor these streets, as they start deteriorating a little bit more, then we're gonna start continuing to invest in there. And part of this project, we're also fixing the concrete. So, as we're touching these streets and if there's uplifted sidewalk or damaged curves, we're gonna take care of those as part of this contract. But of course, you know, you'll have my contact information. If there's any particular area that you're concerned about, just let me know, my department, and we'll for sure send somebody out, assess it, and then we'll, we'll try to get that into the next contract. Next slide, please. Councilwoman Falk talked about, you know, our biggest project in this district. This is a $17 million project that's under construction. And the contractor has been doing a great job. They got a little bit ahead of us. The original schedule is to finish this project by December. So, as, as you can tell, the contractor finished all the concrete work, you know, along the entire segment. And this is on Crenshaw between the 105 freeway and Century. They've already put in the new medians. They already paved the street on the middle. And one thing that's still left to do on this project is we need to replace all the signals. So, we're gonna have brand-new signals for new signage. And what I was saying is the contractor got ahead of us, so now we're waiting for the signals to come in. Because signals, there's a long lead time in getting those in. So, those are expected to start coming in at the end of this month towards, and through November, through October. We're gonna keep on installing those. And once we install those, you'll start seeing those come and then we'll, then we'll pour the concrete that's around those pole areas. That's why we have some, some, some cones out there still in the corners. We haven't poured sidewalk there because we have to wait for the poles to go in so then we can finish off those curb ramps. And the one thing that we're also gonna fix, you'll see that there's concrete lanes on the side, they're very bumpy. I know that, I know for you that drive it, you'll notice that they're very, very bumpy. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna grind, you know, some of that surface of that concrete and we're gonna put in some new asphalt in there. We're gonna preserve the areas around the bus stops just to make sure that the heavy buses that use those bus stops are not gonna beat up the asphalt. We'll go ahead and leave some areas there with some concrete, very nicely done lining up the lane lines. So, then that way, we can preserve the pavement where it's heavy, heavy as used, and then we make it look nice and then we make it smooth. So, that's what's happening on, on Crenshaw. We're very proud and I know that once we get towards the end, I know Councilwoman Falk and her office, we're gonna do some, we're gonna do, and I'm not sure if I need to announce it. Okay. We're gonna do a ribbon cutting so that we can celebrate it because this is a huge project for this district. And we're gonna continue making these investments. After this, we're gonna go into, we're gonna keep going further north, north of Century, and we're gonna continue on the Phase 2 of Crenshaw. So, just a couple more to highlight. Next one, please. So, on the water side, what we're trying to do is trying to get, trying to use more of the groundwater, it's underneath the groundwater basin, underneath our feet, so that we can try to keep the costs reasonable for water. Because the water that we pump from the ground, from underneath the ground, when we mix it with the, with the water that we get from Metropolitan, we're able to save on that. Because the Metropolitan water is very expensive and we get it from them and we have to pass the cost to you. So, we're working on a new well that was built. It's right here on 104th Street. We're in the final stages of that. The well is already built. We just have to make some site, some site improvements and that's gonna help us generate a whole lot more groundwater that we can use. And this is a $6.3 million project, so that's another investment in this district. Next one, please. So, the title on this one is ITS Gap Closure. That's just an intelligent transportation system. That's basically looking into replacing some of the signals that we have out there. We have, we have projects where we're replacing a lot of equipment. We got grants and the infrastructure just around the whole city in the next five years is gonna look different. We're gonna have new signals in a lot of locations. This one in particular for District 4, we're looking to replace the signals and all, and all the ramps, making them ADA accessible to standard on Yukon at 104th, Yukon and 108th, and Yukon at 111th. And we're looking to start this late next year. It's in design now, so we're looking forward to making that one happen. Next one, please. Let's have a couple more. So, they call this the first-last mile. That's just the name of the grant. That means, you know, it's, it's, it's giving us money so that we're able to address, you know, some improvements that are needed at some of the locations around. So, we're gonna be doing some, some new ADA ramps at, at Den and 118th Street, at Den and 118th Place. And we're also gonna address all the ADA ramps needed on 118th Place from Den to Crenshaw. So, those are those. And as, as Councilwoman was talking about with beautification, we also were able to allocate some of this money to improve some of the medians on Imperial. So, one of the things that we're looking to do is between, on Imperial, between Lamont and Casimir, we got some money where we're able to take out those green painted medians that we have out there. And what we want to do is take that out and put some new landscaping and some trees so that it just softens the whole area. And on the parkways where there's missing trees, we want to put, we want to infill that with some new trees so that as you're driving down in the future, it's gonna soften it up and it's gonna feel very inviting. And the last thing, it's not on, I don't have a slide for it, but one of the things that we're also gonna do is, as we're preparing for the big events coming that the mayor talked about, the World Cup and the Olympics, the World Cup is next year. We want to make sure that we're ready for the world. The way we do that is we want to get the streets ready, looking good. So, for the World Cup, we don't have a lot of time. We, in this Streets and Alley's project that I talked about, we have some money in there to basically resurface or slurry seal all those major streets that can be leading to the venues. Put some brand-new striping down, make them look great. And for the main corridors on Prairie and La Brea, and even on Manchester, we're still trying to get some additional funds for that. I'm working with Councilwoman and we're, we're working on a beautification plan where we're gonna do a little bit more than just resurfacing or repaving, re-slurry sealing the street. We want to, we want to put some more landscaping. We want to improve the signage. We want to dress up all the, the signals. And then whatever themes we have from the Olympics that's being given to us, we want to incorporate that into some wayfinding. So that when people come and visit this city on the international scale, that's how we want to reflect Inglewood. So, that's all I have for, for my updates. And I think my email, I can provide it like, like Bill, I won't be in the back. I have some cards. And if you have anything for me, I'm happy to take that. And if, if you can get ahold of me, I mean, if you can, if we don't talk, you could always reach out to Malcolm. And like Councilwoman said, I'm always talking to her office and happily doing so so that we can address your needs. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Tony. Exciting updates, right? Exciting, exciting, exciting. Okay. So, we are getting into the home stretch here. We have two more and both of them are very exciting presentations. So, first up, I'm gonna bring up Bernard McCombray. And while he is coming up, I want to, there he is, there he is. I want to just again congratulate him publicly. He is our new Director of Economic Services, Development Services. So, he's been working for the city for a very long time and working under the Chris Jackson who was elevated to Assistant City Manager. So, a lot of great movement in the city of Inglewood. And one thing that I really love about Inglewood is that we like to promote our own, as you can see, like Tony and Bill Thompson, Bernard, all of these can see, like Tony and Bill Thompson, Bernard, all of these folks, they're, they're with the city, they've been here for a long time, and they're committed, they're dedicated, and they move up. They, they show their commitment, they show their knowledge, and we like to promote our own. So we are celebrating him, and he's going to go ahead and take you through the exciting developments of District Four. So let's give it up.
How we doing this evening? Oh, we can do better than that. How we doing this evening? There we go, there we go. Really quickly, I want to introduce our building official, Mr. Mandir Singh. He heads, he heads up our Building Safety Division, and together, we are a part of the Development Services Department. One of the things that I want to make note of is that part of our vision of taking the Development Services Department to the next level is improving your experience and interaction with our, with our team, right? And so Mandir and I are partnering, partnering to begin to implement new programming and strategy to help improve the customer experience, to help modernize our workflows and the things that we do, right, in the permitting process, and just continuing to, to work to take Inglewood to the next level. So I need your help. When I say next, I need you to say level. Can you do that for me? Next?
Level.
Next?
Level.
That's what I'm talking about. So that's where we're going, right? And how are we going to get there? Thank you, Mandir. How are we going to get there? We're in the process right now. I'm extremely, extremely excited about this. We're under the direction of the mayor and our council. We have started a comprehensive general plan update. What is that? Well, let me start here. The last time our general plan was comprehensively updated was 1987. I was five. Normally I get a whole, everybody laughs, but literally it's been that long, right? And, and think about all, all of the projects, all the developments that have happened in between that time, right? And there was, there had not been a plan, right, to where we would take the future land uses and some of the other associated elements moving forward. And so now we're projecting into 2050. This general plan update is preparing to plan the future of Inglewood over the next 25 years. And what's amazing about that is you all have an opportunity to be involved in this historic document. So there are eight elements associated with our general plan, and we're adding one, which is our economic development element. That's an optional element, right? And so we wanted to add that so that we would be able to support, right, our small business community and how they fit within the Entertainment District and all of the things that we've done here in the city over the last 10 to 15 years. So some of you might have participated in our activity that we had out front. It was a land use activity where we wanted to see what you, it's a data collection activity, what you would like to see on our commercial corridors, which will be potentially changing from different sort of, from the, the land use designations will be potentially changing throughout the course of this general plan update. So we definitely want to hear from you. This is Phase Two. In the first phase, we were very intentional about going out and, and hearing from the community. From that initiative, we assembled over 1,200 comments from the community that spoke to and turned into the vision statement that we're using as the foundation for this general plan update. The vision statement was narrated by the mayor, but it was written by you. And it's our intention to make this update, this plan that we're, we're, we're creating for our future, written in your voice. And so we recently had a community open house. It was at Center of Hope Church. We will be having another community meeting in December where we would, we're going to be presenting to you what we've heard, right? And that's a, that's a big part of this process, is we want it, we want you to know what, what we hear from you, right? And that eventually will be presented to the Planning Commission and then the City Council, hopefully for adoption. Okay? So when I say next, you say level. Next?
Level.
Next?
Level.
In order for us to get there, we need your help. And so please, go to our, our newly designed website, www.nextlevelinglewood.com. There you will find a public service announcement of what a general plan is. It speaks to all of the elements and why they're important to you, to our community. We also have a video that speaks to the vision statement that I mentioned, that, that was birthed out of the 1,200-plus comments that we received from you. And that serves as the foundational principles that we're going to use to create and move forward in drafting this, this plan. It's really important because the general plan touches every single department within the city of Inglewood. And so we probably won't be looking like the Jetsons in 2050, but it's, it's an amazing opportunity for us to rethink and reimagine what our city would look like in, in 2025 years. I'm also excited to announce that recently we went to Inglewood High School. Thank you, Dr. Morris, for allowing us the opportunity to, to engage with our youth, right? One thing that, that happens, and this is unprecedented, most cities don't go and speak to the young people who are going to live out this plan. And so we were able to go to Inglewood High School, engage the youth, and from that, we're going to have some, some of the, the students, and they're going to become stakeholders. And so that they will have a voice too, as to what's going to happen, what they're going to be living in 25 years, right? And so we're really, really excited about that. Everything that we're doing in, with, within this project is not typical. And this community, for a long time, is used to typical. Not anymore. Not anymore. And so we're excited about you helping us to take Inglewood to the next.
Level.
Oh, man, I got a great crowd tonight. Next slide, please. Okay, now, please, don't throw any tomatoes at me, but I want to share the, this project and where we are associated with the residential development that is taking place on a portion of the campus of Inglewood High School, okay? There, there has been a preliminary Planning Commission approval that's for a general plan amendment and a zone change that will pave the way for the development of 571 units, townhome-style units that will be located in the ancillary field areas of Inglewood High School. This is not, we're not tearing down the high school or the middle school to pave way for this development. This is going in the fields between Monroe and the high school campus. I want to make sure that I'm, that I'm clear on that. And so what's going there? 571 residential units, they're going to be townhome-style units. What are we, what, what is the developer trying to do? The developer is trying to attract families. Why is that important? Because families bring kids. And when you have a school district that is working very, very hard to improve its viability and to, and its sustainability, what do we need? Children. And so we have to be able to encourage and incentivize development of projects that will bring kids to the community, which will in turn become students in the classroom, okay? So with that, we have, with this development, there's going to be two clubhouses, two amenity area clubhouses that are going to be a part of this project. It's a gated community. Two pocket parks, over 1,200 parking spaces, and 57 of those units, 10%, will be slated for affordable, affordable housing, for affordability, okay? Now, any, any, any questions on, uh-oh, here we go. All right, there's one. Oh, sorry. Oh, well, hold on, we got a microphone coming, microphone coming.
Just to clarify, it's on Morningside High School, right? Not Inglewood High?
So, so, yes. So, I'm sorry. Inglewood, Morningside is the new Inglewood, right? Am I right? So I'm, so let me, let me, let me make sure that, so, hold on one second. So the current Inglewood High School is closed for construction, right? Okay. And so all of the students that were at Inglewood High School have now moved to Morningside, right? And so not, not Inglewood High School, I apologize. All right. So this is on the campus of Morningside, okay? All right. So I, and I, and I, and I know Stillwater's run deep, and so we, you know, I, I went to, I, I, yes, I, I get it, I get it. That is. So this project, this project is located on 104th. So a portion of, a portion of the project is in the ancillary fields of, of Morningside High School. It also is located on the, the old Woodworth Elementary School site, okay? Monroe Middle School, which you can see on the, the picture in the upper right, is, is going to remain untouched, and the building, the structures of the Morningside campus are going to remain untouched. Question?
What about the tennis courts, the, the baseball fields? I mean, that is, I'm a Marneark, so I, I'm, I'm Morningside here, I'm a Marneark.
I understand.
So 90, class of 82. So with that said, I mean, there's tennis courts, there is a baseball field.
There's a lot, that's prime property, prime property. So what's happening?
So, so the, the ancillary sports courts and fields are incorporated in the development that you see, see there on the, on, on the screen. What is not, what is not included in the development is the football field and the track, right? But everything behind the building structures, including, if I'm not mistaken, the, the bus maintenance yard, and then the area that runs along 104th that was the old Woodworth Elementary School, is all, that, all of that is incorporated within this development The football field is remaining, and the track is remaining. Oh, hold on one second. What was that?
I'm worried about egress and ingress. Right now, to make a left off of 104th on the Crenshaw, going south takes time, I mean, it's, it's busy now. So we're going to add, I mean, 571 residential units with, with 1,200 parking spaces, and they all going to have to leave in the morning, go into work, and come back in the evening from work.
Yeah, right, right.
So how are we going to get in and out of our neighborhoods?
Yeah, so.
But it's bad now.
Right, right. So, so the, the project, the project was, was analyzed through, it went through an environmental process that is, is in the final stages. And so that, where traffic was analyzed as it relates to peak times, right, for, in the, in the morning and the evening. What you see here is, is going to be some dedicated roadway, right, to widen the street. And there's, there are one, two, three points of ingress and egress. So you have the, on the, the most southern end, an ingress and egress that, that leads out to, I think that's 108th. And, and then, and then you have, you have, at, at the, at 104th, you have two points of ingress and egress to allow traffic flow to come in and out of the neighborhoods, to go either to Prairie or, and/or to Crenshaw.
You're familiar with that. Right now, you know 104th is the new Crenshaw. You cannot, 104th has become a freeway.
Right, right.
Okay, they don't stop at the stop signs. It is blowing through, trying to get to Western or trying to go to Prairie.
Understand.
And I can't see where you can adjust adding lanes and adding a little egress on 108th and a little egress. This, this is a serious mammoth problem.
Right, right. So, so we, we were, we will, and, and in the interest of time, in the interest of time, I too will be in the back. I will provide you with my car so we can have some further conversation, and I can discuss with you the project in, in a little bit more detail, and hopefully provide some more clarification. Now, here's, here's the thing, and I, one thing that I want everyone to understand, as, as we continue to evolve as a community, right? As we continue to evolve as a community, there are, there's going to be some push and pull and some give and take from, from all aspects. And so as a, as a city, we're, we're giving a little bit, we're asking the community to make, make a few sacrifices, all in the name of the progress that we're making here in the city. Now, I want you to understand this, and I know the councilwoman is up. I'm born and raised here in this city. I'm raising my daughter here. So every decision that is made in the office that I oversee has a direct impact on me as well. So I want you to understand that. I don't, I live not too far from here, right? And so with that said, I, and I am, I actually am a member of, I'm a District Four resident as well. And, and so with that said, I want you to understand that what we're doing in, in our department is ensuring that we not only take the, and have the best interests of the city of Inglewood, right, but we want to make sure that we have your best interests as well. And so we're asking for your trust, right, in the decision make, the decision-making that we're, that we're making in our office, as well as the trust of our elected officials, to ensure that we can continue to take Inglewood to the next. Oh, we can do better than that. Take Inglewood to the next.
Level.
Thank you so much for your time. Please, I would love to speak with you. I, I can talk to you in the back, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much. It sounds like, Mr. Crumbey, that we might need a, another little workshop or something. So maybe we can organize something for District Four in the, the community room or something, invite residents to come out and just get your input, because I, I hate, I know that there's still some questions, and so, but we still have one more presentation. Dr. Morris is here, and I want to be respectful of everyone's time, and we are over time. So that is the only reason why I'm stopping. But what I will do is I will try and organize a, a workshop, and it will hopefully be on a Saturday, and you guys will be able to come out at your leisure, hopefully before the end of the year, and we can get your feedback, comments, questions, and then we can go from there, so you can get your questions answered. Does that work for you all? So we'll make sure that we organize that for you. So thank you so much. Let's give it up for our new director. And with that said, we have our last presentation of the evening, and we have some very exciting updates from Dr. Morris. I came from Inglewood Unified School District, I was a board member, and before I was able to be blessed to be elected to the City Council. And so I still care a lot about I U S D, and I call him all the time, bug him, what's going on, Dr. Morris? What about this? What about that? So I'm so proud of him, he's doing such a great job, and he has some very exciting updates for you. So come on up, Dr. Morris.
Thank you. I, I have to say, this is one of my favorite meetings to come to this town hall. I'm going to go through the slides really fast, just kind of give you a quick update about some of the things that are happening in the district. First of all, we did a huge number of construction projects this past summer. If you have a chance, go by, what was the Daniel Freeman School, then it became the Warren Lane School, now it's the Kelso School. Huge renovations at that school. One of the tough decisions that we had to make was closing schools, and we were able to make significant investments in the schools that remain open, and they look really good. Go ahead to the next one, Malcolm. Child Development Center, Malcolm mentioned- Malcolm mentioned, right at the corner of 104th, kind of where the original Woodworth School building was, we're building a brand-new child development center. If you look at that child development center now, it's pretty sad looking on the outside. We're actually starting construction in about three weeks, and it will be a beautiful child development center where two, three, and four-year-olds can come and get ready for lifelong learning. It's going to be beautiful. It's about a $15 million project, and we're having the groundbreaking in about three weeks. It should be done by the end of the current school year. Next one, Malcolm, is Bennett Q. School. New building going in at Bennett Q. School that will have six classrooms, a wellness center, maker space. It's going to be an incredibly beautiful new building, because we have some portable classrooms there. We need to take them off and have permanent construction. Go ahead to the next one. Oak Street School. We're actually building 10 new classrooms at Oak Street School, a brand-new building that will have a... Be primarily focused on preschool, transitional kindergarten, and kindergarten classrooms. Next one. Inglewood High School. This is the one I'm most proud of. $240 million this community passed in a bond that's going to build a brand-new high school. Many folks in this room have heard or seen in the news about this new school they just opened up in Compton. Mm-mm. Inglewood High School is going to be better, and it's going to be... Yeah, it's going to be a state-of-the-art high school with every single amenity that the children in our community deserve. It is going to have more than 50 classrooms, and it's about a $232 million construction budget right now. But we're also going to be spending about $7 million, as I've said before, to build a bridge from the high school into the public library. Why are we doing that? Because we're going to go right into the third floor of the library. The city is making a huge investment in renovating the library, and it actually saves the district about $20 million on our construction project, because now I don't have to build a library, because guess what? There's one right across the street, and we're going to build a bridge. Anybody who wants to give me $7 million, we can emblazon on the side of the bridge the name of the company, or whoever is building bridges for Inglewood youth. And I don't care who wants to give us that money, but we're going to get that project done. It's going to be beautiful. Next one. This is just kind of a rendering of one of the buildings at Inglewood High School, but this is... There are going to be seven new buildings at that school with career technical education buildings, exciting medical pathway that we're opening up. It's going to be great. Next one. So, folks always want to say, "So, what's happening with getting the district out of receivership?" I had said, "My commitment is to get this district out of receivership." And this is kind of the scorecard. And as you see, in order to get the district out of receivership, we have to have every one of those areas pass a score of six with no standard below a four. On the next one, it's kind of a summary, if you go ahead, Malcolm, to where we are today. 22. I started here in '23. We had 28 standards that were below a four. Last year, we got the 28 down to 19. This year, we have nine left. And if you look at that improvement, we're going to get those nine standards done by June, and this district is going to be out of receivership. In order to exit, we have to get the scores all done this year, hold them one more year, and that's it. The other thing I have to say to you is, they tell me, "Hey, Morris, you are the ninth person to lead this school district in 12 years." And I keep saying, "Guess what? I'm old, and I'm tough, and I'm here to stay, and I just renewed my contract for three more years, because I think this district needs stability. It needs somebody to say, 'We believe, we have the most magnificent young people.'" I just came from an event at the Bolt Academy where the Chargers and the Brotherhood Crusade have poured so much into our kids to say, "You are worth it." And that's the kind of the scorecard for exiting receivership. Next one. Oh, and that's it. See, Councilmember Falk told me, "Go quick." I would be happy to respond to any questions, and I'll also stick around afterwards. He's coming with the microphone for you, ma'am.
My name is Manu Duhala. And my question is, how do we know that the county will ever complete that receivership in 2026? What other steps will we see that will extend that it will have a word that we can...
I'm sorry, Malcolm. I didn't hear...
The county, since you have given, we have super potential. We have, Dr. Falk already know about it. So, they keep on saying, "Someday, some year, some year will be done." You said today, "It only one more year, we are done." So, how can we know for sure? I have been in Inglewood for almost 50 years, and it has been closed many schools. You are the first one who closed so many schools. How can I know it will be the end of the concept of the receivership that had been over and over, and you come and do the... All the, all the money that we have.
Yeah.
So, tell us the...
So, well, if you go back one slide, you'll see on that scorecard, my first year, we moved nine of the standards above a four to get them out. The next year, we did 10, and this past year, we did 11. So, here's the scorecard. Moved nine up, 10 up, and 11 up, and now we only have nine left. I would say, we're at a casino, but if you want to put a bet on we're going to get it done, when we got 11, or nine done, 10 done, 11 done, we only have nine left. And those nine standards are in the area of facilities and finance. And we have the best chief business official in the world working in our district. We are on top of it, and believe me, Councilmember Falk is going to have me back here next year.
How we know? How can we know? Because it is so many years that they promised... The county will get it, and it will await a order of...
Yeah.
And it will be, it will be the... You said, "How can we..." The community read about it and know for sure you're gone for good. And let us control our destination.
You come anytime, we'll sit down, and we'll go through what those...
No, it has to be public. Don't hide it, because we have come, and you close door, you do your thing, close door. Where is public?
Yeah. Well, guess what? Mr. Myers is standing next to you. He's one of our school board members, and he is the guy who's standing right next to you, who's going to make sure that it happens, because we have a school board that is committed to exiting receivership. Mr. Myers, did you want to say something?
Sure. So, good evening, everybody. So, if you know me, like anything, the reason why I joined this board is to get this district back to local control. Again, I echo your sentiments, okay? I want it back yesterday, okay? We have too much bond money getting ready to go up, okay? And there's not enough oversight. So, I think to have local control, okay, over the ones you elected, okay, this is the most important thing that we need to resolve, okay? However, I know Dr. Morris shared about the FICMAT standards. There's also a state loan that needs to be paid back, okay? So, that's another part of the receivership process, okay? So, just a point of clarity. However, I'm all for local control. If you look at our FICMAT standards, the governance has been out of review for, I think, the last four years, and you correct me if I'm wrong. So, your elected officials have done their job. We come to our meetings. You see me here, I'm in the community. We just want local control back.
Thank you. Let me do one more question.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just briefly, us carpenters on a professional level would like to have our representatives to allow us a stake in the building of this with skilled workers and OSHA certifications and so forth. And so, we would just like to be included in the 500 unit plus and the... And what else? I think it was something else you were mentioning.
The what?
Something else you mentioned.
Um, well, we want to piggyback... Sorry about that. So, what we also have found is that there was, I think, a permit or lease that was supposed to be 50 years, but ended up turning 99 years. So, because of it, the people are not able to buy the units they have to rent. Not only that, we also found out that instead of a 20% cut to the... Not LEU, sorry, but to the school district, as it going to 100% to the developers, none back to the community. Why is that?
So, on the Harridge Development, which is that swath of land between Morningside and Woodworth-Monroe, you're correct. One of the things we hear all the time from the community is, "Don't sell the land. Don't sell the land." The school district, we hear that from our asset management committee. And so, the board at the time, and Councilmember Falk was on the board at the time, made the wise decision to say, "We'll lease the land, because it brings in ongoing revenue to the school district that we can use for programs for children." The district receives by leasing the land rather than selling it currently about $2 million a year. When the build-out is done, the district will receive about $4 million a year. That helps the district to balance their budget, because we have ongoing income rather than selling a piece of property, and then it's gone, and you have that money one time.
Thank you.
Do you want me to...
I'm not going to lease a agreement.
99 years.
Good evening. I'm going to give it back to Dr. Morris, but that's just principal real estate knowledge that, you know, if you sell your property, you have one-time money. If you lease it, hold on to it, lease it, you have lifetime income. And so, when I was on the school board, those were the conversations that we had, because the school district at the time was just bleeding financially. So, we wanted to figure out ways to make sure that the... We set up the school district so it would be financially stable. And so, that was what Dr. Morris was saying. And so, the City of Inglewood, we stand behind the decisions that Dr. Morris, IUSD, has made, because they're working in the best interests of our kids. But I, again, I don't know if you were here earlier, I support carpenters. They have always been here. They've always been helpful. They've been a part of our projects, and hopefully, they will be... Continue to be a part of our project. So, you know, kudos to you guys. So, just wanted to put that out there. But here you go, Dr. Morris.
One last thing, just because I think it's important for the community to know. At our last board meeting, we approved to begin negotiating with the city. We put out a request for proposal on either leasing or selling the former Worthington School Site, and the city wants to purchase that property under the leadership of this council member to expand Center Park, so it could really benefit the community that there will be a larger park. And so, yeah, and so, I think it made Mr. Myers smile. It made the council member smile to say, "That community deserves a larger park." And rather than have an old, falling-down school... Yeah. So, we are working together to make progress. I'm sorry, and I know I'm over time.
Good evening. That was my question, was regarding Worthington Elementary or the old Worthington. But I think that we've heard you all say a lot today, and you want us to trust you, but we need more transparency.
Yes.
Because that's missing in the equation, because we come to these meetings and we hear the results, but along the way, we're not getting the input as you suggest that we should have. So, maybe there's another process we need to have so that people in the community can voice their opinions and not have to feel surprised, or have to feel left out of the process, or feel like there's nothing we can do about the traffic, or someone being hit by a car, or whatever it is. We appreciate SoFi, we appreciate Intuit, we appreciate all those places. I go to all those places. However, I live in the neighborhood, and I want to feel like I'm at peace when I'm in the neighborhood. So, thank you if you extend the park. I appreciate that very much.
And good evening, everybody. Thank you all for sharing your time with us. I'm glad we got the opportunity to come out here. My name is Kyle Patterson, and I am a representative with the Western States Carpenters, and I'm here today just to make sure that I speak about work opportunities and the importance of labor standards on projects like this. We mentioned, you said earlier that the school was supported by bond measure, and that was Measure GG, and it was originally under a project labor agreement with the intentions of utilizing local workforce. And we're just, now that it expired and the job site is happening, there is no labor standards now. So, we just want to make sure that we advocate to everybody in this room, the communities. You all have family, friends, people coming home from, you know, forfeiting some of their freedom. This is a second chance opportunity trade right here. And opportunities like to be able to work on a school in our community is golden right there. That's setting up generational wealth, community wealth. We live here, we spend money here, we deserve an opportunity to build here. We're not being pigs about it. We just want to make sure that somebody up in leadership has our backs and can say, "Hey, you know what? I put the face to that story right there." Somebody that just came home after doing six years and three months, got tried as an adult when he was 17, and I came home and I seen a flyer on the wall. That's the kind of stuff right there. I appreciate you all advocacy for standing up for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to give a shout out to them. They have a wonderful apprenticeship program. So, and then I do work with them. I invited them out. They had a booth at the City of Inglewood Music Festival, because I like to make sure that I provide opportunities to our residents if they want to get into construction. Construction jobs pay a lot of money, y'all. Y'all better know. Look, you better know. So, I continue to work with them and support their apprenticeship program and make sure that our residents know about the job opportunities. So, with that said, you know, I know that we're over time, so I'm going to cut this short, but these are some great comments, great questions. I really appreciate all the feedback, all of the participation. This has been absolutely wonderful. Thank you guys so much for staying around. We appreciate y'all. I'm sorry I couldn't get to all y'all, all of your questions, but we will follow up if you just contact my office. Have a wonderful evening. Get home safe. Thank you again for being here this evening. I appreciate you. Let's give it up for Dr. Morris. All of the wonderful things happening at Inglewood Unified School District. It is amazing, and we are doing it for our kids. So, thank you so much. Get home safe. Have a good night.